Is that what you, no, is that what you think it is?
No, we were hoping it was.
Yeah.
It feels like it's been a long time since I've been, I didn't make last one. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And so it just feels like forever ago.
Yeah.
Hi, Carrie.
Hi.
I let Lando. She said there was more to it today, but we didn't have to try it. You bet.
Hey, good evening. Good evening. We'd like to get things started here as always. I appreciate everybody making time to join us this evening for this meeting. We will be proceeding long as, on as timely of a basis as we can, so everyone can get to their other items that they may have scheduled for the evening. With that, I will start with a pledge and I'm going to ask Mr. Earth Bomber to lead us on that. As we get started, I will remind the board that with our new technology, if you are going to, if you're recognized to speak, please press the little speaker button on your pencil. And when you're done, please turn it off because if we have too many on at the same time, someone else cannot get in. There's some sort of limitation in there. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, let the record reflect that all members of the board, with the exception of Betty Manion, are present. And Betty is present virtually. Just one moment, please. We had one agenda item that was being checked. Okay, it's not an issue. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion on the agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hackett, second by Mr. Fair. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. With that, we'll move on to public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to address the board at this time? Yes, sir. If you would stand up to the microphone, identify yourself, whether you're a member or resident of the school district, your name, and then you will have.
My name is David Wood. I have a second grader and a fifth grader in the Wapaka School District, and we are a resident of the city of Wapaka. And I'm here to comment on the idea of making masking optional during summer school and respond to the parent survey that was sent out a week or so ago. My opinion is that masking should continue until there's consensus among the medical community and, and our medical professionals in the community, that it is safe to end indoor masking among the students and, and staff at the, at the school district. And I'd also like to applaud the work that's been done throughout the school year in keeping the students in school. And, you know, I have family members in other parts of the country where their students have been virtual pretty much exclusively since over a year ago when the pandemic began. And I very much appreciate the work that's been done by the school board, the, the staff and teachers at the, at the school district, throughout the school district, and also the, the nursing staff and, and on and on and on. The list goes on. So, but just to reiterate, my, my position is to continue masking as it is for indoor purposes until there's consensus among the medical community that it is safe to, to make that change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate your coming this evening. Is there anyone else that would, okay? If you'd come up to the microphone, please.
Hello, I'm Dr. Kelly Pacello. I'm a family physician who's lived in Wapaka and worked the past 13 years. I also have a 12 and 14 year old at the Wapaka Middle School. I'm here today to respectfully ask the board to continue their current COVID mitigation strategies, including mandated mask wearing through summer school. Similar to David, I want to thank everybody for saying, excuse me, I wanted to thank the school board, the school nurses, district staff for all their hard work ingenuity this past school year. Everyone in this room should be very proud that we were able to keep our children in school in person, which is something that many districts in both the country and the state were unable to do. Even through the surge last fall, which is a time as physicians, that we saw more illness, more hospitalizations, more deaths, and ever in our career, school remained a safe place. So, thank you all for that. I do understand 2021 is not 2020, so some have raised a question about when we can safely consider adjusting these well-proven strategies. To date, masking and distancing have been our primary ways to protect each other, and now we do have safe and effective vaccines available. The caveat to this is that the currently approved vaccines are only available to those age, over the age of 16, which is only a percentage of our school-aged kids. This week Pfizer was approved for kids 12 and older. And there is ongoing research on the younger age group, however, vaccines for these ages will not be readily available when summer school sessions begin. In addition, despite the availability of vaccines and expansion of eligibility as a county, Wapaka is only at 37% of people with one dose of a vaccine and 32% of people who have completed their vaccine series. In addition, we've seen increased spread of variants of the virus, including the UK variant B.1.1.7 that is spreading more between children and is more aggressive than the virus that circulated last fall. Our neighbors in Michigan have seen twice as many children hospitalized this year with pneumonia, severe COVID, and multi-system inflammatory syndrome this spring compared to last fall. So, to summarize, I recommend that we do not change any mask requirements for summer school 2021 because the, for three reasons. The majority of our children in our district are not yet eligible to be vaccinated. Our community vaccination rates are too low to be considered protective for our students, and children remain at risk of severe disease based on Michigan, which based on Michigan appears higher than their risk was last fall. Thank you all for continuing to make smart, safe decisions for the health of our school district and our community.
Thank you. Certainly, anyone else that would like to address the board at this time? Yes? If you could, I, I don't, you weren't here when I introduced this. If you could identify yourself, indicate if you reside within the boundaries of the school district, and then you have the mic.
Thanks for allowing us this time to share our thoughts and feelings on this. My name is Dory Hap, and I am a, I do reside within the Wapaka borders. My kids attend the charter school here in town. And Dr. Pacello and myself are, are family physicians in the community. We did care for many people during the COVID pandemic and saw lots of sadness during that time period. And we only truly care about trying to keep the community and our kids safe, especially in the school environment. I think the school has done a fabulous job so far, and I'd like to see it continue. And I echo Dr. Pacello's comments that I would support continuing mask-wearing for summer school while indoors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board at this time? Mike, if I could ask you to open that door, it is open session, and I want to make sure that if anybody else is wandering in that they can find us. Mr. Sari, did you get any emails with regard to public comment that needed to be shared or should have been shared?
No, I did not.
Okay, thank you. Mark, can you, or Steve, can you tell if there's anyone online attempting to address the board? Can't see from the list that there likely is. No comments or messages? Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to the review of the board meeting norms. Mark, if you'll start us off, please.
Be prepared, stay informed, listen to others, and be open to differing opinions and perspectives. Being inquisitive, reflective, and respectful, checking our biases and agendas at the door, we will thoughtfully and objectively discuss the facts of the situation and not personalize issues or.
Ensure open and clear communications and maintain transparency. No surprises.
Remain objective, forward-thinking, and open-minded. Respect the opinion of others.
Maintaining professional relationships is key. Know and respect the roles and responsibilities of the board, which is governing, administration, which is tactical, and staff operational.
Start on time, end on time, stay on task.
When a board decision is made, we accept and abide by the decisions both publicly and privately. We accomplish more united than divided.
And number seven, honor and protect the expectation confidentiality of all topics addressed and discussions held in closed sessions. Thank you. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a mo? Is there a motion?
I'll make a mo, no, go ahead, Steve. I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? There being none in roll call?
Betty Manion?
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Michael Evansky?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Yes. With that, we'll move on to communications. Mr. Sari.
We have several announcements. The first is Teacher Appreciation Week. We have, have had last week. That ran May 3rd through the 7th. School Nutrition Employee Week was also last week. And National School Nurse Day took place, or will take place tomorrow on May 12th. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And then we have a donation that's an action item. You want me to talk about that?
If you would, please.
So, we have a donation of musical instruments to the high school band by Fawn and Dan Johnson, and we're very appreciative of that gesture.
Is there a motion to accept the contribution?
So moved.
Motion and second? To accept the contribution.
So moved.
Motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sari, could you just give us an idea what some of those instruments were? Do you know what?
I have no idea.
Oh, okay.
The board accepts with our gratitude and appreciation. Thank you very much to the Johnsons. Also, with the Appreciation Weeks, teacher, school nutrition, and national school nurse, we, as a board, can't say enough to all of those groups for what they've gone through and what they've done for our district, our students, and the community as a whole during the course of the last year. No way that we can really express verbally our gratitude to the extent that's truly in our hearts. So, our thanks to all those groups. With that, we'll move on to the district administrators' report, please.
I'm not going to read this entire report to you, but I'm just going to hit some of the highlights. As you're aware, we have an update regarding our vaccinations. Over 81% of our staff, 37% of almost of our county, 78% of our 65 and older population. I'm going to skip the health, the health of the district, the, for the sake of timeliness. I, it's included in the memo regarding summer school. I do have a question in regards to graduation. Graduation is scheduled for Sunday, the 6th of June at 2:00. And are any board members, we have it posted right now, but we, if nobody's going to show, we won't post it. But if we're going to have board members present, we'll, we'll post that. You're not going to be able to?
Can you, can you remind us when you, when you say present of how, how that's going to transpire this year? I know we talked about it being indoors. Is that still the case?
It, it'll be in our field house, correct, Pat?
I, I don't know what to say at this point. I'm kind of hoping to do that. I mean, I, I would like to. But, I mean, June 6th. But, I mean, June 6th seems like a far, far off right at the moment for me, but.
It's far off for me, too. So, you're not doing wrong.
Ron?
Yes, Betty?
I have a question. Would our presence there eliminate the possibility of some parents being able to be there?
No, it won't. We, we've planned for you to be there.
So, it wouldn't affect numbers of family members?
No, it would not.
Okay, thank you.
Steve Hackett? No, Steve Clissman, yeah. Our president will be there, right?
Am I speaking? Then, then I'll probably be there.
And I, I'll be there, Ron.
You'll be there, Betty, okay. We'll have this posted. You know, this will be my first graduation in Wapaka.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, Dale, are you going to be there?
I haven't missed one in 34 years.
Terrific. We love to have our board present at graduation because, you know, just like we would like to have all of our staff present if that were possible, it's the accumulation of 13 years of work. So, we're, we're pretty excited about this event. So, thank you. At this point, we are tentatively planning on an end-of-the-year celebration. And if we do go through with this, it'll be on June 9th, and we do, we will invite you as the board to participate in this. I really would like to see us because I think it's time for a full staff celebration. But we're still thinking about how that would look, how we would do that. And so, anyway, that's tentative right now. I want to make you aware of that. More information will come out on that. The strategic plan, you know, I've, I gave the board a timeline, and we're behind on that timeline right now. And part of it, we're waiting on our graphic artists to create those designs that we talked about. And the other part is the core team wants to meet with our principals, and my fear is we're not going to have it ready for the end of this school year like we had initially thought. I just want to give you that heads up. But we'll work on that and continue giving you updates on where we're at. I want to share some appreciation. I think it was a couple of weeks ago, I sent a chain of command memo out, and I, then I forwarded it to the board. And as I spoke to different board members, you folks were very appreciative of that. And so, I just wanted to share that as well, that I'm appreciative of you supporting that. The board retreat, on communicate, a board retreat on communications, the do's and don'ts. Some of this will be based on my conversation I had a couple of weeks ago with Sandy. We did an exit interview and learned some information and wanted to share some of that, especially pertaining to governance model training and board linkage meetings. And we've, we, we talked about that quite a bit since the WASB convention, and wanted to talk about that in, in the form of a retreat. The last item on the agenda.
Ron, before you go on, what, what timeframe are you looking at in terms of that retreat?
June.
Okay. And what, what, what kind of timeframe within the retreat? Are you looking at like one afternoon, one evening?
Hour and a half?
Oh, okay, relatively.
Is that okay?
And we'd schedule the time afternoon or evening to the board's convenience.
Okay.
If we're, we're also going to have to get my evaluation in, in June. So, if we do it, and we could do it in July, too. It doesn't have to be June, but you'll see as part of the, I don't know if you saw that checklist for the, the new board member, I'm going to go over that as the last, last item. One of the suggestions in there is, do we want to do regular retreats just prior, like 30 minutes, 35 minutes prior to our 5:15 meeting? Then we don't have to have special other meetings, you're already here. So, that's something that we can discuss at that point. But as, as you are aware, Laura Colbert has, has resigned, and we wish her all the best. We're going to miss her. We have her position posted. We have a plan in place. On Thursday of this week, in two days, the core team and myself are going to be meeting with our entire middle school staff, those who are interested and wanted to meet with us one-on-one. And we have 15-minute time slots just to solicit some information and, and hear from the staff in regards to next steps and what they're looking for as far as characteristics go in the, in the next principal. And we have a transition plan in place for next steps. The grant writer update was attached, it was linked. As you're aware, our mental health program grant, we received that $48,000 to contract with Giggle Therapy. Greg has submitted to the, the DPI and another school-based mental health grant. This is $75,000 for two years. More information will be coming in regards to that. So far, Greg has written seven grants during April with the total requested almost a million for the month of April. To date, he has been awarded $1.4 million with a total of nine grants so far. And then the Chamber of Commerce hosted Congressman Mike Gallagher in Wapaka a couple of weeks ago. And I found it interesting because the three things that he focused on are the same three things that we as a school district, as the city of Wapaka, and as the Chamber of Commerce of Wapaka are focusing on K-12 education. We want, we want an excellent, we, we want to continuously grow and improve in, in education in our district. The second point that he made was hardest working state in the country. I think we have a hard-working community. And he talked about a conservationist agenda, and we talk about selling the great lifestyle that exists in Wapaka with our chain of lakes and our rivers and our kayaking and our parks and, and the Mecca that it is for outdoor activities. So, it was just, just interesting how our marketing efforts that we're doing are totally aligned with what this, this politician is, is thinking. So, I just thought I'd share that. Does anybody have any questions?
There being none, we'll move on to monitoring.
So, we have a teacher appreciation video. We're, we're not going to show the full five, six-minute video. The administrators did a great job creating this for our teachers. We'll show just a quick minute, and then Mark will stop the video, and we'll have each of the principals just quick, give a quick report on how that went. And then I'm going to have Mark give a quick report on all of the curriculum work that you'll see, you see on the whiteboards here behind you, the hard work that our teachers have done. And Mark states of, pretty historically, this is the first, all that Mark says, this is the first time in history of Wapaka that we've done this. We've been at the point where we're at right now as far as teaching and learning goes. So, Mark, go ahead and play the video first, please.
So, we started a conversation the school year, and we're like, what, what can we do to help support staff? Because we recognized all the efforts they did. So, I, there was a conversation with the art department, and we were talking about some inspirational type item that we could do. So, we made a bunch of planters. So, the art students in the art club, starting in September, started making all these pots, colorful with all these little sayings on them. And working with the egg department, we figured out getting some plants. So, between the art students and the egg students, they planted enough of these little planters for each teacher with little sayings on them. And on Teacher Appreciation Week, they delivered them to their teachers, and they're delivered around the school. So, it was, it was pretty impactful. The teachers, some of the students knew what teacher they wanted to make it for, and they had a little saying for them. And it was a pretty cool thing. But it started in September and didn't end until, we just got the last four or five pots through the, oh, God, kiln, thank you. Like a couple of days before Teacher Appreciation, so, yeah, it was pretty cool. Laura? Oh, and Laura did the video, so thank you, Laura.
Well, thanks to everybody who sent the pictures. So, at the middle school, we gave out these little containers, and John and I went around and had a little ditty that we set, you know, puns on rolling with us or rolling, the, the role you played with our kids, and thanks for rolling with all the different changes. And if you turn them over, you'll notice there's a little Hershey's hug in there because we all missed a lot of hugs this year. So, we, we hid a little hug in there for everybody. And we gave them lunches, and our lunch on Wednesday, the 5th. And we also got them donuts on Friday morning for Teacher Appreciation Week.
So, our PTG had something for our staff every day. They had like an open vending machine, and they had asked parents to send things in that were individually wrapped so that our, our staff could eat throughout the day, which they're always very thankful for. And on Wednesday, they provided lunch through the Smoke Hound BBQ food truck, which was a, a big hit. And it was a beautiful day, so they were able to sit outside and enjoy lunch outside together. And then we provided them with individual succulent plants as well because work doesn't suck when they're around. They could not read their card out loud to their kids when I delivered them, and they were like, oh, it says how much Miss Apparello loves us.
At the Learning Center, on Monday, they were given, all staff were given a miniature bunt cake with a little note that said, thanks a bunt. Kind of corny, but we thought it was good. And Jody and I hand-delivered those. And on Tuesday, Jody and I put together with the secretary's little goodie bags for the staff, and then that was delivered with a chamber gift certificate from our PTG to all staff. And then on Thursday, we had anonymous donor bring wrapped presents, and inside was a picture frame with a homemade picture frame out of block wood with a little card for each, each staff member. And what really made him smile is he included a scratch-off with all of those as well. So, and we, the week before, we sent out an Infinite Campus Blast to our families, asking if they would sit down with their children and make a homemade teacher appreciation card. So, they were coming in throughout the week for all the teachers as well.
Sure. So, in alignment with Teacher Appreciation Week, I just asked Ron if it'd be good if we could take two minutes to share some of the amazing work that our teachers have been doing over the last couple of years, but particularly since February this year, we got back into this work. And so, I know that chart paper is, is pretty small out there, and so this is just one content area, but this is English Language Arts, and there are five domains in the Common Core State Standards for English Language Arts. So, you have reading foundations, reading literary and informational texts, writing, language, speaking, and listening. Those are the five domains. Reading foundations really only goes K through 5th grade, so there's only five columns there. Whereas, reading literary and informational texts and the other four domains span every grade, K or kindergarten through 12th grade. So, each one of those boxes really represents a standard per grade in there. And so, the green versus the white represent, out of all the standards that the state says or the nation says, we should have our students know and be able to do 178 days. It's just not realistic to get through all those standards. And so, what we've been asking our teachers to do is work together and identify which standards are of a greater priority for our students, and what standards would then be a supporting priority for our students. And so, when we ask that to happen, what we're saying is that the expectations of learning should be the same for every 2nd grade student, every 7th grade student, every 10th grade student when it comes to English Language Arts. So, our teachers have to sit down, look at all the standards that they're asked to have our students know and be able to do, prioritize them individually, work together then with their other teachers in that same grade or same content area, find agreement. And then we're asking teachers to work with the grade level above and a grade level below to show that there is a progression and alignment or coherence of those standards. And so, you can see in the writing domain there, those top two standards are green K-12 because our English department, K-12, believes that those are of a great priority when it comes to writing skills and abilities for our students. And so, I'm excited because this is just the ELA mapping of it, but you can see by Carl and Mark there where we're at with our other teams. And so, our teams, our goal is for the start, or by the start of next school year, this sort of mapping exercise will be done for all grades and all content areas. So, when we would ask, you know, what is it that we expect a student in X grade or X class to know and be able to do by the, the time they're done with that class? We will have exactly what standards that student will be expected to know and be able to do every grade, every course by the start of the next school year. Then during the course of the 21, 22 school year, our teachers are going to take those standards and break those down into learning targets, which the standards, if you would read them, are often pretty vague and pretty wordy. A learning target is much more student and parent-friendly, and, and there will often be multiple learning targets with a set of standards as well. So, to me, that, that's just an example of the amazing work that our teachers have done for, for the last couple of months.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Mark, I have a question, only because we're, we're talking about, and we have been, we're moving into the summer school phase of our year. When it comes to those targets, especially at the high school level, do we work just with those targets with, in terms of students who have done poorly in certain targets? How, how does that factor in?
So, two different classes for summer school. One would be a continuous progress. So, let's say they had 15 targets in a semester course, and you didn't do so hot on seven of the targets, you did okay on the other eight targets. So, in a continuous progress summer school course, we'd say, let's go back and revisit those targets that you didn't show us a minimum level of proficiency on, so you're not having to redo the entire class. Just redo the learning, the assessments, the skills, the labs, whatever you need to, to show us that you do understand and you can reach those standards. The other type of course would be an enrichment-type course where i, it's, it's maybe not related exactly to the standards, but it's something more along the lines of strength and conditioning or a fitness class. Or you could be taking a class for the first time as well. Not as many of those classes during summer school, more on the continuous progress or recovery class.
So, if you were a student who, using your 15 points, is the timeframe then for that student for summer school based upon those, the teacher saying, okay, you've, you, you've shown that you can accomplish X, Y, and Z, so you can move out then?
Correct. As, as soon as you've shown us mastery in what you didn't show us in for the last 178 days, you're good to go, and you're good to move on. And that's where students can recover more than one or two classes if they really work on it during summer school. Obviously, we would encourage you to work on it during the school year and then recover it as, as it happens, not wait until summer. But yes, so, my time in summer school versus your time in summer school, even though we're in the same class, would be different and be based on how we did.
And would the grading be based on a pass/fail situation?
I don't remember exactly how that was done, but I believe that is correct. Yes.
Other questions? Okay, Mark, will you be able to leave those up for a little bit? If anybody wants to take a look at the fine print after the meeting?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hey, Mark, would someone, would someone take a picture of that board for me?
We certainly can.
Okay, just take a picture and hang on to it and then I'd love to see that.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Sari?
That is it.
Okay, we will move on to board reports and we'll start with our student representative. Ella, would you like to share some information with us?
Sure. Um, there's definitely a lot of excitement for the end of the year, but one of the things that at least I'm concerned about is just like grades because the motivation to keep good grades during the end of the year tends to dissipate. But I think that a majority of the students have been doing pretty well with that so far, so hopefully it continues in that way. But other things are the spring athletes are definitely happy to be back and playing again after missing last year. Link Crew is also starting. Their first meeting was April 28th and it went pretty well. And with student council, I know that we gathered some volunteers to help at the graduation and with the awards for that. And the student council officer elections were also, I think, last week. And it's a pretty good team and I think it has quite a bit of potential.
Very good. Are you part of the link crew?
Yes.
Okay. What is your best guess, if you don't have an actual number as to how many are participating?
Oh.
Just a guess, not going to hold you to it.
Not to the freshmen, but the, how many leaders? Um, I don't know, maybe 25? I feel like that might be, okay.
I see a lot of nods agreeing with you, so it must be pretty darn close. Any other questions for Ella? Okay, thank you very much for joining us and for your report. With that, upcoming meetings, May 21, special board meeting at 9:30 a.m., June 6, high school graduation ceremony, 2 p.m. And June 8, regular board meeting at 5:15 p.m. And as Mr. Sari said, we will be looking at getting a workshop together for the board. With that, we'll move on to the policy committee. Mr. Fair?
Thank you. The policy committee met on April the 30th. As board members know and some of you administrative people will remember, we're kind of working our way through a long laundry list of policies. There are, I believe, over 200 of them. So we're taking them chunk by chunk and we were able to get through quite a few on that particular day. There's a list of them here and I know this seems onerous, but to really read them into the record, we'll take them all then on a voice or a vote after that, if that's okay. Okay. So we recommend for approval and adopt the following policies. W-323, special observance days. I'll skip the Neola numbers just because you can read those. W-330, curriculum development. W-333, religion in the curriculum. W-341.41, human growth and development. W-342.1, programs for students with disabilities. W-342.3, programs for gifted and talented students. W-342.4, parent and family member engagement in Title I programs. 342.5, Title I services. W-342.7, cooperating agencies. W-342.8, Section 504 plans and services for students with disabilities. W-343.45, Start College Now program. W-343.46, early college credit program. W-345.61, early graduation. W-345.6/ W-345.62, W-345.64, graduation requirements. And W-345.7, W-345.8, promotion, placement and retention. And I would put those forward for approval.
I'll second that.
Being a board, being a committee recommendation, a second isn't necessary, but we welcome it. Thank you. Any discussion? There being none, we'll do this by roll call since it's policy.
Hi.
Mary Manion?
Yes.
Jeff Fair?
Aye.
Michael Gentry?
Aye.
Steve Duffield?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
And that's all for the time being.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to administration. The first item, annual cell phone expectation reports.
Yes, we have two, two reports. These are annual. We started this last year, if I remember correctly. So we have the, the middle school cell phone report and then the high school. So Mr. Meyer, you want to give a quick synopsis, summary of your, your report for us, please?
I sure will. Hopefully I don't get too loud with this. We follow the same policy we did in 2019, 2020, but I just wanted to note in here some of the amendment to what we did with the COVID. Due to last year, backpacks were not required. You couldn't carry them around and the use of lockers were in place. So the kids had to put their cell phones in the lockers locked up. Due to COVID, the restrictions had to change, so students were allowed to carry their backpacks around. They weren't allowed to use their lockers, so the cell phones were in their backpacks or on them for safety reasons of, again, they didn't want to lose them or anything else. So kind of that was the difference between the two years. So students were allowed to carry them, but they needed to be turned off and away and not be out from the previous year. The outcomes were still the same. We have a spreadsheet that the staff has that they're allowed to fill out as the incidents come into play. So the course, the first incident is more teacher driven, taken away, addressed and then put on their table and then to get back at the end of the hour and the teacher would fill out a spreadsheet. If the student gets caught the second time, then it gets turned into the office and I'll make a contact home, tell them about the scenario of what happened and how the cell phone is not to be out and being used during the school day. If a third incident, the teacher finds it again on device, it's turned into administration again and the parent must come and have a meeting with the administrator and pick up the phone. And then if it goes beyond that, then the student will be required to turn in their device when they enter the school that day. And they'll be turned right into the office and we have a drawer that's pulled out from the tube. So on there, I have a link to the documentation log. If you want to see how that all works, we don't need to open that up. So this year, comparing to two years, and I'll end with what are my expectations are for next year, is our numbers are down. Last year, we had 55 total. This year, we had 24. I'll kind of go through that. So we had 19 violations when the students were called for the first time, which is only 3.5% of our whole population, which is, was really good. We were happy with the phones being off and away and not causing any conflict or disruptions in the classroom. We only had a couple of students with two and we only have one student that has to turn their cell phone into the office on a daily basis as well. And of course, we're focused on looking at that as you can't have speakers or Bluetooth speakers or anything else that counts against the technology as well. And iPads, everything that all counts. But we had some questions coming up by staff and by, you know, and some parents brought my attention about those smart watches. I said, oh, that'll be a different issue at a different time. That's where we put the phones right now, before we start trying to get ahead of the game with all the cell phones and all the technology pieces that are in there. So overall, I, I believe the plan is in place. I think it's working very well. I know the staff is on board with it. We, last year, we really worked and taught the students why it's important to be off of technology, why we need to enforce these policies to keep everybody safe in the schools. You can't have phones with cameras in bathrooms. You can't have cell phones with, you know, cameras in the locker rooms. So it was really a safety for them as well as everybody else around and posting stuff. You know, if a fight breaks out, how fast would they videotape them and post that out? Well, that's against rules and laws as well. So really teaching them the laws of the safety of why we put this into place. The staff reflected again on the cell phone policy. I'm on the back of page two here. Definitely students are less distracted in class when their cell phones are off because they're not looking at who texted them last and they're not trying to find out who, what's next, Snapchat or Instagram or what's going on. Students were more positive in here and we're focused on that digital citizenship piece of the puzzle of why it's important to be, you know, present during the class. And that's what they said, the students were more present, more engaged in their classroom. This one I like, less drama throughout the school day. Okay, that's a big one of who said what, who said what, where, where are we going, where are we going to meet and everything else? That has been, keeps the discipline way down, which then keeps the kids in the classroom learning, which is our key. Get the kids in the classroom and learn. And of course, if they're in the classroom, more learning is taking place. And that's the key thing with the cell phone policy that has been successful at the middle school. So my recommendation is still to keep the policy that we have in place, but as I look at the future prediction, don't be alarmed if we see an increase at the beginning of next school year because we have to reteach it. No backpacks next year, hopefully. Back to the use of lockers. So cell phones should be in the lockers, not on them at all. So we're going to have to reteach the students. Cell phones cannot be on you, cannot be in your pockets, can't be anywhere on you. They need to be in the locker, locked up and put away. So we might see at the beginning of the year, that retraining, the reteaching of the expectations of what the cell phone policy is. So when we look at next year, that's what I see happening with the, you know, seventh and eighth grade of next year, of this year. And of course, the freshman year, well, that's going to be your presentation then. Okay? So students are not allowed to possess their cell phones during the school day. So definitely reteach that focus, not carrying their backpacks, reteach of using the lockers, you know, and again, not handing out your combinations to keep them safe. So you can see the data comparisons between the two. Last year, 55 at this time, this year, 24. And I think we were just a little more lenient because they had to have them on them for safety precautions from being stolen. Any questions about the middle school cell phone policy?
Going to hold questions until we have both the high school report in too, and then we'll take questions as a whole because they may be parallel questions.
Sure, absolutely. Ms. Herb, you're next.
Well, I'd like to start out by, it is an honor to serve as associate principal here at Opaaca High School, home of the Comets. You're going to hear good news from me. If you just want to go right down to the graphs, a, a lot of what John said is the same thing that is happening at Opaaca High School, but we've seen a drastic drop. And I don't think a great deal of it has to do with COVID. I think it has to do with consistency and clarity with the use of cell phones at the high school. And the more the middle school enforces cell phones, you know, like those eighth graders are going to be freshmen next year. So freshmen, sophomores and juniors, their entire high school career have had the no cell phone policy during instructional time. So a little bit different than John, I think our numbers are going to continue to decrease even though there's more kids in the building, longer times, they just get it. When you take a look at the cell phones last year, 475 at this time. I was going to talk to Carl about getting that big safe that we had in the old district office. Honestly, get it in here and put those cell phones in there because we had nearly 100 cell phones by, you know, the middle of the year last year. And this year, we have nine. That's the difference. It's huge. Because every student knows that if their phone is out during instructional time, the first time the teacher says, you can't have the phone out, please give it to me, they put it on their desk at the end of the hour, the student gets it back. The second time, the teacher asks for the phone, they give it to me, I call the parent and the parent comes and picks it up. I had one parent that said, I'm not coming to pick it up. You can have the phone. And I'm like, oh, cool. I had a phone in my office for two weeks before a parent came to pick it up because they want that. And then the third time, it goes to Mrs. Tabest. A little bit different than the middle school. If you have three violations and you have to give it to Mrs. Tabest in the attendance office and you do not, you forget and you take it to your class, you get three hours of in-school suspension. That has made a difference. If you give a dummy phone, if you have somebody else's phone and you lie, it's a half a day of in-school suspension. We've had one of those last year or this year, and last year, we had 47. You know, it got to be like huge for me last year. But again, like consistency and clarity, it's going to happen. When you walk down the hall and it's class time, it's still instructional time, you still have to give your phone up. So that's the bottom line. I think we're going to continue to have a decrease. You know, we'll stress it at the beginning of the school year. There is no exceptions. Here's an example. We had a student that is a diabetic that used the phone to take, you know, measurements. The parent, the dad was so mad that that was a second phone violation. The dad said, give the phone to the nurse and that my son can pick his finger five times a day. Because you have to learn like the, you know, a part of it is like the addiction to the cell phone. You know, that's one part of, piece of it. The other is, you know, yes means no, yes means yes and no means no. So like if there's a policy that you cannot have a cell phone, it doesn't matter, you can't have your cell phone. So I, I think that really made a difference in this part of the building. I hope you agree. You know, but I think it's, it's a different, and, and you can answer my question, but it's a different way of like, it's, it's, you can't have your phone. Last year, we, you know, we had the rule that if you, you can't have your phone out during instructional time. Some teachers would allow it out on the desk, but the student couldn't use it. And other teachers are, were saying like, you can't even have the phone out, period, in my phone or in my classroom. So even though it was passing time, you still cannot go through my door and have the phone out. So we kind of had to tweak that a little bit this year because that's a big difference now, from yes, it can be out to you can't have it in my room. So we had to make it like, it's one rule and that is, it cannot be out during instructional time. So they can walk in to your classroom with it. You know, if, that's fine, but you cannot have it out when the bell rings. So my prediction, it's going to go down. I'd like to, you know, like thank the board for backing this policy. Dale Polo, you know, Pat, you know, we saw a reason for it and it certainly has helped. I think every teacher will tell you that. Your thoughts?
It definitely has gotten better from last year, but I also think that some kids are just sneakier than last year. There's definitely a change. It's not completely like, yeah, but better.
We're not going to ask you to rat anybody out.
We have some students that will and some that will not.
Thank you very much. Any questions with regard to either the middle school or high school policy and/or results?
I just have one question. Did you find the same kinds of decrease in concerns with your students as you would? Did you find the same kind of decrease with parental concerns? Did you get as many phone calls or were parents just, were they pretty more, pretty much accepting of everything to this point? I mean, this year compared to last year?
Middle school more accepting and understanding and for it. Yeah. I mean, again, because the lockers weren't be able to be locked, so they like to allow that they could have it on them and off for that for safety reasons. But last year, we only had a few that thought it was unfair. And this year, I haven't had one argument from a parent saying it's, it's a bad policy. So we feel supported, whatever's that.
In your data, it would be interesting to know what percentage. But knowing what percentage of students who have phones.
I should do an easy survey and that, yeah, that'd be interesting.
It would be high nineties. But I'm sure it's gonna change between fifth.
Yeah, definitely our data, I mean, many fifth graders do not have it. So I, you look at years across the board, fifth grade is hard, probably, like you said, small percentage actually have a phone in fifth grade. A couple have it in sixth grade and seventh, eighth grades where you see the increase because parents give phones because of more sporting athletics that they're in to communicate. So that would be a nice piece. You know, do a quick survey, who has a phone? And then use that for our database. We can actually easily put that into.
Other questions?
I'll just make one point. When I was teaching, if it was one student in her room and had that phone, it was a distraction. So it doesn't matter if it's two or three or whatever, one student can make the big difference in the classroom. And that's why I was an advocate of this policy. So.
I will raise one question. Ms. Herb, you brought up a situation and with a policy of not during instructional time, if someone wants to or needs to use it between classes, they can?
First school, between classes, during lunch and after school?
Okay, that was, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly because in the case of the diabetic, if they have the Libre app or there's another one, I forget the name of it right off, in order to monitor their blood sugar level. That would be important to still have access to that, obviously. So, okay, very good.
In our, my recommendations are made for students with five oh fours or anything to have access to that phone. So there are modifications to that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
It seems like the older you get and the four, et cetera, they find different ways of using the bar before to help students versus the point, like that's the last option.
I think the whole thing about this phone policy was to teach kids what's expected when they get out of here. What's expected for them in the workplace? We're, we're supposed to be teaching kids to get ready for the workplace. Well, this is the time to do it. And so I see Steve saying yes. So
my kids advise me never try to call them at school time because they, they're deathly afraid of losing their phones and stuff. So.
They, they know Ms. Herb?
Very clear.
They know Ms., they know Ms. Herb?
Yes. They, they made that very clear. So I, I think that, you know, for the most part, it appears that they've gotten the point.
Okay, thank you very much. Stay tuned for smart watches and other devices, I guess, which may be around the corner. With that, we'll move on to summer school recommendation. Mr. Sirey?
Yes, as you're aware, this memo is six pages long. And a lot of thought in consideration has been given to this topic for quite a while. And we appreciate Dr. Hap and Dr. Pacello and their guidance and our, our medical people. We make a great team and we've done a lot of good things this year in order to stay open. So you can see the, the first highlight is that we're, we're very well aware, we understand what, what our medical community is advising in regards to this change. And, you know, to be clear, we are not asking during the school year where we're talking about after the school year is over for July or for June fourteenth to make this change. As a district, we try to continue to make the best decisions that we can in this, in this very challenging year for the greatest number of people and for our organization. And we also understand the need for our medical advisors to be cautious when it comes to their recommendations and in their guidance. This is the result of the survey and it was, just so you know, this isn't, wasn't like this is some kind of vote. The purpose of the survey was not to try to influence or change anybody's mind. We believe that people's minds are made and, and the purpose of that survey and the link included in it was just to share our perspective from why administration believes that we can do this transition for summer school inside masks as optional safely. So we thought when we looked and we see a hundred and ninety-nine responses from staff, that is a very high number. In sixty-five percent were in favor of the recommendation. From students, we had three hundred and sixty students and seventy-three percent were in favor and parents, that's a high number of parental responses, four hundred and forty-nine with sixty-nine percent in favor. And what we did compared to the initial memo that I sent you is there was a slew of others. You know, they could either select yes, no, or other. And some people in their comment, it was, it was clear that it was no, we don't want it. Some people it was clear, yes, we do want it. And then there were some that I just couldn't figure out because of the comment, or they may say something like, I don't know. And so we left them as other and you can see there was four in the staff, twelve among the students and five among the parents. We couldn't translate into what they were feeling or thinking in regards to that. So page three just starts a list of, I forget how many pieces there were in this, but, you know, we, we are vaccinated. We know at least we have eighty-one percent because those are the individuals that participated from our staff in our county vaccination clinic that we had. We also know, I personally know, there are several staff that have gone outside to Walgreens or a different pharmacy and, and received their vaccination. Then of course, you know, we, we have staff that would have some T-cell immunity from, from having had COVID earlier in the year. This was, this was shared earlier, the percentages in our county. I'm not going to reiterate that. We do know that we have had some of our students vaccinated. It's, they're starting a new warehouse for vaccinated kids in, in the state. But it's, it's still new and so we don't have that data to exactly know how many of our kids in particular. So we're just going off the county amount and percentages. And as of today, twenty point two percent of our sixteen and seventeen year olds and twenty-three point three of our eighteen to twenty-four. So it doesn't really help us get a better, as much of a grasp on it as I'd like. But thirty-seven point four percent of the county, nineteen thousand people. And you can see our, the vaccination rate has dropped. Now, we're going to continue to work with Jed and giving him ideas to try to increase that amount by going to the foundry. He's working on that. Maybe, I don't know, maybe he can go to Schusler's and do a shot after the shift, a shot and a shot, like some of the communities around the country are doing. Or maybe they could go to the harbor and do a shot for a shot type of thing to try to drive up the amount of vaccinated individuals in our county. Those are all things when we, when we meet with Jed that we talk about. And he's very open to those and it's just a matter of following through and ensuring that that takes place. Number five, it's also well known about the overall student reactions with the virus, that it's less threatening for our older population. Or for less threatening than that of the older population, excuse me. And then I have some links in here that they go to explain that. And I'm not going to read it to you, but we've had three deaths in Wisconsin between the ages of ten and nineteen and zero, between the ages of zero and nine. The next, the next point talks about between April eighth and the twenty-ninth, those sixteen working days where we had zero teachers, classroom teachers out for a COVID-related reason. The other interesting thing, and I didn't check the data today. I would assume Jed has that updated, but we have had nine days, it would be ten if it's today too, where our fourteen day average is in the twos. Nine days in a row where our fourteen day average is in the twos and that has not happened since June. You can see when we look at the month by month with the COVID staff report. So this is any COVID-related reason. So it could be a close contact, it could be a positive. Last month we had six. October, when we were at our peak, we had a hundred. Since January fourth, we've had seven positive staff members. That's all staff from all three hundred and thirty-six of us. This, number seven, ladies and gentlemen, I think is a game changer and I don't think we get enough credit for this game changer because this investment of almost three hundred thousand dollars, it makes me, when I come to work, feel better physically. Because when I'm at home and my seasonal allergies kick in, my eyes are running, my nose will be running in the evening and on weekends, that's what I'm experiencing. But when I'm at work, I don't experience that. My eyes aren't running right now and after this meeting, when I go home, they will be. So it takes ninety-nine to a hundred percent of all bacteria, viruses, antigens, allergens, you know that. In every twelve minutes, every twelve minutes to be a close contact, it's fifteen minutes I have to be by somebody. Every twelve minutes the air is purified. And I don't think we get enough credit for that. I don't think it's taken into anybody's rubrics or formulas of how they calculate what's safe and what isn't safe. The next would be number eight. In, in children's mental health and everybody's mental health and working to try to get back to normal. And how important that is and how psychologically difficult it is for some of us to transition away from masks. Because over the last fifteen months, we've been conditioned to have them on. And that's, that's very hard for some of us. Summer school obviously is, is a different type of a situation. It's voluntary for the most part. There's smaller class sizes, it's kind of a, a, a perfect time to do this type of transition. As you know, and part of the reason I'm bringing this to you as a board is there is unrest around this country right now in regards to this topic. I just saw, my wife is from Tomahawk and I'm getting communications from my in-laws every so often about what's taking place there with the protests and how, how, how things are being handled. We see a lot of, a lot of districts, and I'm not recommending this, but they've dropped the masks inside and made them optional across our state and we're going to see a majority of our districts in our state, as I talked to the superintendents around, a majority are going to have masks optional inside for summer school. I, I can just tell you, I was on Friday with, with, with the superintendents in CISA five. And that's the way it's going. You know that the New York Stock Exchange has relaxed it because everybody there is vaccinated. If they're vaccinated, they can take it off. CISA seven in Green Bay, it's an ed agency, it's not a school. But they have changed their policy and made masks optional as well. We think that doing it now would give parents an opportunity to prepare for that. I linked in here some other data from Brown University, just to show that there's data all over the place on, on, on these topics. Number thirteen is one of the most important in my mind. It's the risk level that, that we would be taking. Having a mask works. We know that it works. It works because the saliva that comes out of our mouth is stopped by the mask. But we don't know the level of efficacy of how, how much it helps. It does help. But there is nothing that's at zero risk. Everything we do, there, there is some level of risk. When we, we leave the house, we're taking a risk. And I have in one of these coming up, almost forty thousand people are killed in car accidents every day, but we still all jump in a car and go and travel. There is a level of risk. Well, there, yes, we are never going to get to zero risk with this. And with the, with the increasing numbers of vaccinated people, our medical professionals have developed since this whole thing began, a series of new protocols and treatments. So getting COVID is not like a death sentence and it's not, the odds are small, especially for our kids to have a significant a case of it or to be hospitalized. And I have that data here from the D eight, Wisconsin DHS. So again, I, I guess it's, it's a combination of these, mostly the vaccinations. Seventy-eight percent of our most vulnerable, the sixty-five and older population are, are currently vaccinated, eighty-one percent of our staff that we know of, we know that it's higher, it's probably into the nineties, are vaccinated, a significant negative, the significant negative effects of COVID for our young population are very small. It was mentioned that the Pfizer vaccine will now be eligible to our twelve through fifteen year olds. So we'll be working with Jed on that and trying to get those clinics going in our schools. And not mentioned previously in any calculations are those who have natural immunity and do live in our community as well. So we think, we believe as an administrative team that we can do this safely. And so the recommendation for you to consider and, and, and discuss is two, two-pronged. One is the beginning on June fourteenth, when summer school begins, that masks are optional. But also that fact, number two, if, because we will continue to monitor this data through the summer into the fall, we're, we're going to continue to do that, but to give the authority that if, if something were to change, that we would be able to go back and put this mitigation strategy in place along with others, if, if others do. Right now we're planning and continuing with all of the other mitigation strategies that we currently have in place.
Thank you, Mr. Sirey. Before we get into discussion by the board, because we would technically need a motion before we start debating or discussing, are there any questions for Mr. Sirey regarding the information that he's provided? And/or recommendation?
I mean, I do have some comments. I don't know if they're, I suppose it could be questions. Ron, very, very well-done document. This is very convincing. I mean, it, it, it shows me, you know, the way, the way that we're gonna go. So, you know, just thinking about coming to this meeting tonight, would I want masks to be optional coming to this meeting tonight? Of, of course I would. Is it safe to have masks optional at this meeting? I don't know because a health professional has not told me that, I guess. When, when I think about doing things, I untie my shoe the same way I tie it. I don't want knots at the end of the night. You know, we got into this based on meeting with the health professionals and going on their recommendations and doing this. And I, I guess my question with, with several other questions would be, why would we not want to finish this, you know, the same way we started? I know it's encouraging. CDC is going to have some new guidelines this week for indoors. And I think it's good news for everybody in this country to have a maskless indoors. But I want a health professional to tell me that. The vax numbers in Opaq County are unfortunately lower than, I was looking at all the counties in the state today. I was clicking on them and we're not doing very well here. I mean, there's some people who are resistant to do it. And the vaccines are there, but people are not choosing to do it. I like your idea about working together with the county or the city and trying to get some kind of initiative. I think that's what we need to do to, to, to open up school full, full next year with, with no. But you know, it's big, it's bigger than this. If you looked at the news last night and watched what happened at Luxembourg Casco, Luxembourg Casco made a, their school board made a vote to stop all coal, a COVID mitigation. And the county was, they're going against what the county was recommending. All right, but it's, it's more than just masks. It was like reporting and quarantining people. So for example, we just had a bad outbreak on a baseball team here. I, I don't know if you're aware of that. But it, it ran, it went, ran rampant. So I think our main numbers are not going to look as good as April just on that one outbreak. And when I, when I think about what happened in Luxembourg Casco, they said, we're going to stop all, we're going to stop the quarantine, the masks, the, everything back to normal. It was heck over there and they had to meet last night and they had to undo what they did because the throwback was so bad because they went against what the health. So I actually am in, in, in favor of working this out. Now, i- if, if you could go meet with the healthcare people today after the meeting and they said, no, I, I think that we should do this, I would be right on, right there. I just say we should finish this thing the same way we started it.
What does that mean, finish this thing?
Well, finish it like we were working with the healthcare people. You're in exactly that. And, 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 you know, the only vote that we actually had on, on the mitigation of this, besides, you know, spending the money, the, the, was to start, if I recall right, the sports in the fall and then the prom were the two votes. But all the rest of the mitigation factors were, come up with you, the administration team and the healthcare professionals.
Yeah, because you guys approved that in July or August, right?
Right, so, so when we voted on the masks for, for the fall, you know, the parent group came in and they wanted to change something that we had voted on before. And that was just to start sports two weeks earlier, all right? That was one thing that we voted on. And then the prom, I think, did we vote on that one for the prom and the graduation? Right, but, but even with the prom, the healthcare said, you know, we, we want that, that prom to be kept to two hours. And we did that. So where, when I say finish it like we started it, if, if we were going by the healthcare professionals' advice all along, why all of a sudden are we not? Why didn't we, why aren't you going to meet with them and try to convince them? And then come to us with a unified front and say, this is what we all recommend? I mean, I would say if, I would even make a motion, and I don't know if this is possible, to say, if you can come up with this plan to open up and if, if you can convince them, like you convinced me, but convince them.
Yeah, I don't think that's possible. I can't change their mind.
Then why is that? Why?
Well, I can't change their mind. You know, as we talked, I was told until we get herd immunity in our county, masks will stay on. So we could be talking twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. We could be talking that. I don't know. That's why I asked you, Mark, where, where is the end? This is the end of the school year on July twentieth of twenty twenty. We voted, you voted, the board voted that we're going to have masks this year. So the school year ends coming up here on thirteenth or July twelfth, our last activity. So, or June twelfth, June, I'm sorry, Pat, thank you.
So you mean to tell me that, that they're not going to, no matter what the data says in the next thirty days?
Unless the CDC or the, another organization like the CDC, like the Wisconsin Department of Health, unless they, they give the okay, I don't think we're going to be, our medical people are not going to move.
If I may, before we get in much further on this, we're normally after a public comment, we don't invite additional comments. But under these circumstances, it appeared you were looking for recognition. If you can come up, if you can come up to the mic, please. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, because I, we have been working very closely with Ron this entire year. And again, it's been a, you know, we, there's stuff that we have not always met eye to eye. And then there's stuff that we've worked through and it's been a really good experience. I will say for this, I just wanted to clarify that, as I said at the beginning, I would feel like as though it would be a time to consider loosening up our COVID mitigation measures, which is you're starting to think about masking. When either, as a county, we're in a herd, we're in, well, we guess to say a some level of a herd immunity. So if we're getting our community member, or our community vaccination rates are in that seventy, eighty percent, just like they are at the schools, if we can mimic that in the community, we would feel way different, way more comfortable with having these conversations, assuming that cases stay low. The other piece will be when everyone is eligible to be vaccinated. So I think there's two pieces. I think you, you want to get a lot of people vaccinated, that is the best case scenario. But you also need people to be eligible. And if we're looking at a school where half of the grays are not yet eligible to be vaccinated, then it is our job to protect those kids. And this is the only way, just like six months ago, when there were no vaccines available and our only option to protect our students and our staff was masking and distancing. We should keep those in place until everybody is eligible for a vaccine as that level of protection.
I have a question. Yes. One question, and I've heard this from, a little anecdotal, but a lot of people I've talked to. Will we ever get to herd immunity? Because is our county, do we have a lot of people in our county that, number one, don't believe in this immunizations? And number two, they're afraid of the immunizations because it's so new. And then the second thing is, if we wait till our kids are eligible, those same people are not going to have their kids. I've heard this from many, many people saying, I got it, but I'm not going to give it to my kids.
And that ends up to be a choice. But eligibility and choice is different. So my kids, if I vaccinate my children, I know, which I will, they're scheduled next week. They're luckily almost twelve, getting on her birthday, by her choice. When my family's vaccinated, I, I, we will continue to, I will continue to wear a mask in public. I will encourage them to continue to wear a mask at school. I understand the peer pressure of middle school and high school. So when you, I do want to clarify, when you say masks optional, that kind of can, in a lot of social circles, can mean no masking. Because it's going to be very challenging to be that one kid who's the doctor's daughter, who, you know, is supposed to wear a mask when none of her friends do. And that's already a challenge, that's aside the point. But I will know that I've done everything I can protect my kid. And so if they go to school and their neighbor, their kid sitting next to them isn't masked, at least I know I've protected my family and that family can make that choice for themselves. If I had children Dr. Haps age who are not yet eligible to be vaccinated, I would not be comfortable sending them to school next to someone unmasked. Because again, they're, they don't have that same level of protection. So I think when everyone is eligible, best case scenario, we get more vaccine rates in the county. But at least if everyone is eligible, every family has a chance to protect their kid. And until the families can protect their kids, I believe that we, as a school board in a school district, that we need to continue to protect our kids.
Disappointed clarification, if I could ask, please, you had mentioned that once it's, a vaccine is available, that becomes a game changer. Is that with or without the seventy to eighty percent herd immunity?
I don't think that, I don't think they're mutually exclusive, which is why I wanted to speak to Ron's point. I mean, yes, it would be great if we had our county rates in that high levels. I, I think, but I, I would feel, and this is just me speaking as a physician, I would feel more open to getting to negotiating a change when everybody is eligible. Again, that would assume what the county rates are and the variance, and there's so many things that we need to consider.
I was just.
Even if we had it seventy percent, if everyone is eligible, then I would be much more.
I was just curious, because that seems almost contrary to each other, that we need to get to seventy, eighty percent. But if the vaccine's available and we aren't at seventy to eighty percent, that's, makes all the difference, or makes a significant difference, so.
Yeah, I, to your point, we probably won't get there anytime soon, unfortunately. With all the reasons that you mentioned, that I work, we work daily to combat and to educate and to model. And, you know, that's all, you know, that's all I can do. I, people have to make that choice for themselves. So I didn't, I wanted to speak up because when Ron said that we would not budge until we were at seventy to eighty percent, that's not quite true. When everyone is eligible, depending on our rates and how we're doing, I think that by next fall, we could, we have a potential to be in a much better situation than we are now. I feel like summer school is too soon. Thank you.
We have this large population of, you know, unvaccinated people together. It's, it's very well known that the cheapest, easiest, simplest, best mitigation measure is a mask. You know, and so it's been proven time and time again. And, and at this point, kids are trained, they know how to do it, they, they're not really complaining. So to continue it for the summer seems like a fairly easy thing to do.
Steve, you had a question or a comment?
Couple of comments.
I hesitate in getting into too many comments that might be a board, considered a board deliberation until we have a motion. But versus a question with regard to any of the items that have been presented, but go ahead.
Luxembourg Casco, from what I saw on the news, part of the reason for rescinding that was because the other sports teams, other schools would not participate with their sports team. That was, that was on Channel Eleven News with, what they said. And as far as like the people not getting vaccinated, a large number of people, and I received, and I think some of us received email from one person stating, you know, that remove the masks and let's move on. There's a large, from the people that I deal with, that are saying, let's, let's move on. I think we have not touched base on the school, the teachers that are going to be teaching summer school. What is their feelings on it? Because, you know, their, their health is, are concerned. If they're saying, we're okay with it, that, that means a lot to me. Because, you know, I watched them in, in the meetings prior to get the school open, their concerns and all that. And if they're saying, I, I think I'm okay with it, I, I think that has a lot of weight that, and to listen to. You know, that's just my opinion there.
Mr. Fair?
Steve?
Just a moment, Betty, I'll get to you in a second. Pat was going to say something.
Okay. Yeah, you know, this is a tough, a tough question. I think two, two reasons why I'm, as I look at it, first of all, summer school for all parties involved, unless I'm wrong and Mark can correct me, is voluntary for everybody. Students, staff, it's a voluntary situation. So consequently, people who sign up for a summer class, people who sign up to teach a summer class, if, if they are required to wear a mask, know that ahead of time. Yes, I think all of us would like to see the situation arrive sooner rather than later, when masks not only are optional, but maybe not even necessary. But I also am real concerned about the opening of twenty twenty-one in the fall. I, I don't want us to lose ground. I heard everybody at the podium tonight, and I have received emails, as all of us have over time, of how we're doing a good job in this district, because we've allowed our students winning to be in class as, as much as possible. And we've had numbers go down consistently. Personally, I don't want that to stop. I want that to continue if it takes us through the summer. Because it's voluntary, nobody's required to do that. I would feel much better if we are able to get through the month of July and into the first part of August with fewer and fewer and fewer, and maybe more and more immunization. So we can start twenty twenty-one on a good high note. The last thing I think, I, it scares me a little bit because of some of the data. Like mentioned in Michigan, I don't want to take a step backwards here. I don't want us to say in the fall going, okay, we're going to start again, we can only go four days a week. Maybe we're going to only go three in a hybrid. I'm hoping, as I mentioned, that we can start everything port on port in a normal fashion. If it means continuing into the summer for a few months with voluntary people, then I'm all for it. And I'm listening to our medical people say that's our best option. I think that's the way I would go.
Betty, you had a comment?
Yeah, several, imagine that. And I'll kind of put it, try to frame it as a question, so it's not discussion. I guess I agree that we have done such a good job in, in union with our medical professionals to go forward this year. I mean, I think we're one of the most successful districts in the state. And so I just think we err on the side of caution, which has really been a benefit for our community and our parents and our kids. I am a big proponent to let science guide us. We've used science all the way along. And if we're ninety-nine percent done with the race, and I know school is over. But if you consider summer school as part of that race and we start clean in, in August, I, I don't see what difference two more months is going to make. My experiences and being around a lot of kids, kids are so used to wearing masks now, it's not an issue for them. They, they grab masks before adults do. So I don't think it's a terrible inconvenience for them. I get that people want to shed them, but kids are better at wearing masks than adults are. So I think it's more of a parental thing. Parents are having a problem more than, more than the kids are. Yes, our HVAC system is great. It's awesome. I've heard that from a lot of people, but yet we've still had cases. So while it's great, it hasn't completely eliminated, you know, the whole COVID thing. And my biggest fear is that we are a vacation community. Look what happened last summer, when, you know, everybody comes to Wapaka and they're hanging out and there's no masks and, and it's, you know, restaurants and bars and whatever are wide open. And I would, I agree that the population now that's not getting vaccinated is that middle aged population. Yeah, all us old folks are, we're all vaccinated, we're, it's great. But it's, it's that middle group that ethically, they don't want to get it or for whatever reason. And, and that group is the group that could bring our numbers way high again. And they are around our young children. So they're parents of our young children. So I think we have to proceed cautiously because of that. We don't know what Wapaka is going to look like this summer. And if we can do our part by keeping our kids safe, and I, I'm sorry, but that statistic of we've only lost three children, that's three children too many. And I, I just think it's a, it's a small act to do, to, to just finish this race and hopefully look at it anew in August. And hopefully because of the precautions that we've taken and will continue to take, that we can keep everybody safe.
I have a question, Steve.
Thank you, Betty. Dale?
I'd like to ask the admin team. Is there a reason in learning that's going to change if we make this optional? Is there a reason why you want to go towards the optional? I guess is what I'm asking. What, how is that going to differ with what we're doing now as for the kids' learning? Why, I, I guess I'm, I'm looking for the reasoning behind it.
Right, right now, Dale, there, there are, there are kids that don't even know what their teachers look like and vice versa. I, I hear from my wife, she happened to see, see a student and didn't know what the student looked like and vice versa. I think that's part of it, the mental health. I, I do know with that Luxembourg Casco thing, we, we met with that superintendent after that decision and we told him, nobody's playing you. And when, when he went back and told his, his board, all of your kids, sports is over for the rest of the year because of that decision, that is the reason they went back. It wasn't from public health. And there is a school district down in the southern part of the state where that county public health did agree for them. It is Union Grove Elementary, if the article is correct. Of course, that article could, could be mistaken. But Union Grove Elementary got the green light from their health department to have masks as optional for the summer. Was I did?
Just got a couple more questions out of the health people. Fauci last night said that there was going to be different restrictions coming out, like soon, okay? How is that going to play into how you're going to make your decisions then, if he says relax it? Okay, so that, that's my first one.
From what I've read, I know nobody's going to come out with it. But I believe it's loosening up restrictions for people who are vaccinated. So if you are, if every single person in this room was vaccinated and everybody was healthy, he would say that it would be okay that we took our masks off, which is a very different thing than a school when kids are not vaccinated. But I will take it, but I, whatever he says, I will, I will listen to and I will research and I will.
And, and we kind of, we would follow science too. So if that's the recommendation, that would change the way we would think too.
But as of today, if you look up the CDC and it says, what should you do when schools and mitigation measures have not changed?
See, I've lost a lot of sleep over this, because I've been reading statistics and I know what, a lot of people I've talked to in town want this to go optional. Okay, and you look at when you walk into Fleet Farm, you walk into restaurants, you walk, there's people walking around without masks. I still wear mine, even though I've got my immunization. But, but I see them in there with kids, no mask. I, I just don't know which way to go. Then I hear, you know, I read what Ron and the admin team put together, and you're absolutely right. This mask, nobody recognizes you without it, with it on. You know, so especially when you wear a hat, then it's really something. So you don't know who it is. So you're, you're arguing two different things here. Mental health, which I just got done, I, I don't know if I could share. I just, I just read a lot of things from the foundation, from scholarships, okay? There was a lot of mental health things going on with kids in there that I was really surprised to see, okay? So now you're weighing it both ways. Do you go with the mental health or do you go because? Do you go with the mental health or do you go because there's a possibility of the COVID? You know, I, I, I just, um, it's just, it's.
I've never had a student tell me their mental health stuff is related to mask wearing. I mean, in the very beginning of the year, there may have been some anxiety over getting, wearing a mask. And it, that was the very beginning. And as everyone got used to it, I have not had anyone, I mean, yes, we see a lot of mental health teenagers every single day, and nothing is related to that.
The fact that we're, you, everybody in this room worked so hard to keep our kids in person, even when it was hybrid, is huge. Because of mental health, we're being all virtual. I have friends and teachers in districts that are just going back now or not even going back. And the level of mental health in those populations is really frightening.
We don't know if this isn't a part of it. I mean, it's gotta be a part of it. You can't see people and talk to people, it's still a part of it. A part of your mental health with talking to people. Lisbon?
As a student from a mental health perspective, I do have a mental health problem, but it has not stemmed from mask wearing. I can go out in public and when I see someone without a mask, I get uncomfortable and I want to go out the door and walk away just because of mental health. And when I'm not, like, if I see somebody's face, that makes me happier. It's not an old person, it's from their personality. It's not, oh, I can see your face without a mask. And I'm trying to get a little emotional because I'm very, um, I have to love something.
I'll just make one comment that you've heard from three people that are, with like masks remain required. There's not anyone from the public that came tonight to say that, to support that they go optional.
And we, I mean, we're taking our time out to come here because we do feel really strongly about this. I mean, I, a lot of kids, like, my kids can't be vaccinated, they're too young. And when I asked them about, you know, they're signed up for summer school, they, they all say they are so used to wearing masks. They feel very uncomfortable. And I don't think that's a mental health issue, they just want to be safe. And they're fine outside, they don't worry about it at all. It's just kind of, it's a new, new normal for them.
To Betty's point, three kids is too many kids. I agree with her heartedly. And, but death is only a piece of COVID. What we have seen in our COVID journey is that it is, it is debility, it is longstanding, ongoing. It is, so death is one piece of this continuity or this journey that is COVID and that there are people months afterwards and there's kids that have suffered. And there's just a lot of other things that go along to it. So just looking at death is not a struggle.
Steve, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, I, I did have a question for them as not a, well, it could be.
Part of the discussion.
Go ahead, go ahead and make the motion, then it can be part of the discussion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the District of Wapaka continue the mandated uh, mask wearing through the summer school of 2021.
Okay, there is a motion to continue through summer school? Is there a second? Motion and second. Discussion, and I will start that if I may. Uh, question for you doctors, and I realize you may not have an absolute crystal ball on this. But at what point and how will there be a point at which the factor of those that have been vaccinated versus those who have some level of immunity, if you will, uh, due to having had COVID-19? At what point do those two numbers merge? Because I, as I recall, at one point, Wapaka County made the national news for being vaccinated, which to me would imply a large number of people, and I don't remember the specific numbers. So at what point do you take the 30, 35, 40% of the population that is eligible to be vaccinated with the X number that have had the virus and have some level of T cell, I presume would have? And I realize, we don't know right now if you've had it, how long you're immune. I realize if I have a vaccine, I don't know how long I'm immune.
We don't, that's the exact point. So the science says at least 90 days, the science is still watching it. We don't know after that how strong, how much, how against variants now that we're seeing all these variants. So there's a lot of question marks. If you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the variants right now, they're saying both Pfizer and Moderna do cover?
Right now. Yeah, but we don't know about natural immunity. So we don't know if you had it, are you gonna be as immune to the variants? We don't, we just don't know. So if you, I mean, if you've had COVID, you should get vaccinated.
I understand that's the position. I'm, I'm talking more about true herd immunity. If we want to use that term and say that anywhere from 70 to 80 to 90%, whatever number anybody wants to pick, constitutes herd immunity.
I think, I mean, it really does vary based on what, what is the population? What's the, how contagious is the variant out there? So some variants are more contagious. So statistically, there's a 70% number on it, and that's gonna be, I mean, there is a lot of people modeling that. But, but, but is it okay? But you're right, in our county, you may never be. And then, then it's just figuring out how we can save these people. What's going on within our.
Please, no, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I sit in on Dr. Andrabi's uh, community conversations, uh, or Skype in on them, whatever the media is that we use for those. But yeah, I, I guess that's something that kind of hangs in the back of my mind. You can say, well, once it's available to everyone, the dynamics change. Is that because if they choose not to get it, then I who have had it shouldn't be necessarily feeling responsible that I gave that to them? Uh, I still don't know what the likelihood of me getting or transmitting it is, having been vaccinated. You know, I think there's some unknowns here. And to, I guess something, and Dale said he's lost sleep, something that I struggle with is, are we in this forever? You know, and I don't know that I want the new normal to be that I have to wear a mask forever or that our children have to wear masks forever, just because we haven't been able to achieve some level of something. And, and I guess that's where I'm struggling a little bit. And would hope that we could find some sort of metric that would allow us to see, okay, the vaccinated plus those that have had it. Because there presumably is, if it's like most other viruses, some level of immunity for at least a period if they've had it.
I think if you look at some countries like Israel, for example, I mean, they have a probably highest proportion of their population vaccinated. And because so many people are vaccinated, they have been able to open up things. And they haven't had to use masks in the past and their kids have been. So I mean, there are examples out there that we're starting to learn from.
Pat, you were going to comment?
I, I just wanted to say anecdotally to your idea of wearing, my, my daughter works in an OB department in a large hospital in the valley. And I asked her recently, you know, because of COVID, what are some of the long-term effects? She said, we will be wearing masks the rest of my career, everybody in our department at all times. And that's something that she has become accustomed to, and everybody there will be doing that. So to answer your question.
Even, even in flu season, if you look at that, we've virtually eliminated flu season. We didn't have a single case. Normally, we saw hundreds and hundreds of cases. And would have sent many of those people to the hospital and be exposed to them. And I think it was okay that we would even get the flu because the vaccine is not even that effective. It's only 45% effective. So the fact that I learned so much in just wearing a mask and being around people who had COVID the entire time and I never caught it, to me, that shows me how effective they are. It's such a minimal thing like that. I mean, in my environment, in hospitals. Now, in a school, again, same thing, you have these kids of large people that, that are unvaccinated and it's the same, same complaint. We want to, in other environments, maybe a good place for no masking, but we're talking about where should it be worn?
Question.
Dale? Question hasn't been answered yet of, if I wear my mask and you don't wear yours, am I still protected? Well, then it's optional, right? I mean, because if he's not wearing his mask, but I still have mine on, will I still have protection? I know it's double protection if he has his on. I'm just trying to weigh this out because I don't know which way to go. I'm lost.
Yeah, I mean, masks are in, in general, they protect others. So it is, and vaccines are the gift we give to others. You know, this is about a community. I worry, so I think a little bit, you talked about flu season. So in the health, in historically in healthcare, if you are not, you, you're strongly encouraged to get a flu vaccine, but it was never required. If I worked in a hospital and I did not get my seasonal flu vaccine, then I was required to wear a mask for the entirety of the flu season. That has been a rule for years and years and years, and that keeps everyone safe. The challenge is, this is an adult in a work environment who have, who will follow that and will wear a mask. I, I mentioned earlier, I worry about masks optional because in my head, if I go back to being a middle schooler or a high schooler, that very, very quickly turns into no mask. Because there's so much peer pressure and there's so much, you're doing that, I'm doing that. It's, I, I really, really worry about numbers dropping even more if we make it optional. And to the point, kids have been doing this the entire year, they have not, my kids haven't complained. I haven't had kids complaining, we're not hearing kids complaining. We don't know what the fall's gonna look like. And to your point, we don't want to step backwards and then have to put it back in place if it's already working.
Pat, you're reaching for your.
Well, I was just gonna ask, I, I just, and I mentioned again anecdotally, um, over time, the, the amount of vaccinations we hope will, will increase. At, at, at what level and how fast, we don't know. But again, anecdotally, some institutions, not ours, but um, uh, give example of the University of Notre Dame, for instance, is gonna be able to go maskless for all of its students because no student will be able to enter the university next fall unless they can prove vaccination. So, and they are one of dozens of major universities now that are moving in that direction, have made that a policy. So if you want to enroll there, you're either vaccinated or you go somewhere else. Sort of like what we're saying with summer school. If you want to come to summer school, we want you to wear a mask. If you don't want to come to summer school, that's totally voluntary, or you can go online to some other institution or other program. But I think we are going to receive more, and we'll, we'll, we'll be able to get more and more people over time as, as institutions and other groups make it voluntary. You can't travel to certain countries without having voluntary or having vaccinations. The more people are able to move around again and feel comfortable and travel, um, they're gonna have to do that or else they won't be able to go. So I, I think this, it is gonna happen, and I think that we're moving in that direction. And I think we can do, in my estimation, our small part by simply saying, let's keep our protocols in place until the end of the summer school, which I consider part of the school year. And then hopefully in the fall, we can look at and revisit and be much more lenient.
I will express that, uh, while I fully respect all of the commentary here in the positions, and I know it's an emotional subject for people, that at some point, whether it's this summer or next fall or the year 2023, we are going to have to consider whether or not changing our mitigation efforts, if they're still required, because we haven't reached herd immunity, however that's calculated, to perhaps say, okay, we've been trending incredibly well. Our numbers have been incredibly low. Is that all because of a mask? Not necessarily. There are other things, social distancing, a level of immunity that uh, whether it's through vaccination or other, the fact that the younger people are not as susceptible, or at least if they get it, they're asymptomatic. And we don't know what the transmission rates are for those young people. At least nothing that I've seen has been conclusive on that. And so at some point, whether it's the so, the physical distancing, whether it's the mask, whether it's uh, other efforts that are, well, we'll continue to have our ionizer here, but other efforts that we may want to consider whether or not putting some sort of threshold at which we will go back to masking if this is not working, if it's going the wrong direction, if it's because of people that live in the district that haven't been vaccinated or people that are coming here on a seasonal basis. Who may uh, be a snowbird and they winter down there and they summer here, or it could be the people that just come here for a week. But at some point, it would be my own personal opinion, we need to be able to say, okay, numbers are fabulous when you look at our district and right now at our county. And if we're going to ease some restrictions, perhaps we consider doing so, but we continue to monitor, continue to monitor closely. And if our 14-day average goes above six, we're currently at two, I believe, or whatever the number was, then we will consider, or we will go back to whatever mandate we have relaxed. I don't know, that's just my own personal opinion. That I'm not sure, and I respect everything that the medical community is coming forward with. I respect the science. I also respect the part of the science that says ages, and I don't have it committed to memory, between age this and this, the occurrence is minimal or has been minimal and/or the hospitalizations and death has been minimal. Betty, I agree when I say that, that any hospitalization or death is incredibly unfortunate and unacceptable. But I just think we also have to give consideration to whether or not we put thresholds around some things or make the decision in our own minds that we're willing to live with this forever. I, for one, I'm getting a little, I'll stop talking because I'm getting a little humid under my mask here.
Summer school. Have we already started summer school signup? And that was under the impression of that we were wearing masks?
Yes, enrollment told that that was before this discussion.
I would really want to know that if, what, see, I asked for the survey originally. And when I saw, I was, when I saw the numbers, I'm saying, okay. I was hoping to see the numbers go the other way, to tell you the truth. But um, now I see almost 60, 67% of the teachers say optional. Almost 70% of parents say optional. Okay? How is that gonna affect the numbers of summer school if we made it optional when the people that signed up were assuming we were gonna have masks? You see, this assumption was already there. And if we change it now, how's that gonna affect? And, and Mike, how many kids have complained about wearing masks? So there's two questions out there. You don't, you don't know how this is gonna affect the numbers because the assumption was already there. And how, what numbers are we at? Are we up pretty high?
Three-year-old, three-eight-year-old, we're at 306.
So that's pretty high for, for what we've had in the past, because I know summer school numbers dropped off. That was with the opinion that masks were gonna be used.
That question wasn't issued, it was just sign up time.
Right. Okay, so I'm gonna think that it was in the impression that masks were gonna be used. Okay? So that, I wanna, I wanna make that point. The other point, Mike, is how many, have you had a lot of kids come in complaining or at, at any of the schools about wearing masks?
Well, we have had two disciplines that have multiple times reminded them that they have to wear their mask. So we talked to them multiple times and they're ignoring the mask thing. We have them, have these disciplines. So there's, in those conversations and some other conversations, students have made comments to me. You do realize that when we walk out those doors, we take these off, we're around each other all the time. And we're not, and I, we're not seeing the spread. So I don't know how to answer that to those kids. So they're all in the community and not wearing the mask and they're close and doing their thing. They come in here and there's a frustration. Is it all kids? No, but there are some that are coming to me and I imagine the search as well, who are concerned that they, you know, they have to wear the mask. We're not getting them, some of the comments that we're getting.
See, and there's where it is again. We, the parents that signed up were thinking there was mask, and yet there's still, and we know that there's some, that there's gonna be after problem, there's gonna be a party that the parents are throwing. And my assumption was I, that there was no, gonna be no mask required. So there's another group.
That's, that's not something that the board has any control.
Right, I know, I know, but I'm just saying about the community.
Right, I don't know what their plans are.
Right, right, but I'm saying about the community. So again, you know, here we are, teeter totter.
Okay, other con- Okay, other comments? We do have a motion in second. Yes, Ella? Okay, other comments or questions? And it would appear there is not discussion with regard to any type of numbers that we could look at with regard to if the 14-day average elevates from the current two to six, that's when we change or?
I think, to be honest, like you were talking about your cell phone data, consistency that we have, that's going to breed people following the rules. And if we're changing things back and forth all the time, it's going to breed more resentment and it's going to make it harder to get people to follow the rules. I feel like if we just go consistent the whole time, people won't have a touch of a, would you change things the last week?
Okay, we'll call the question. Roll call. Betty, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Roll call on the motion with regard to continuing masking through the summer.
I vote yes.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain. No. Motion carries. With that, we will move on to onboarding process for new board members.
Yes, this is one that I'm looking for feedback on, as well as some discussion. This is the first time that we've put a checklist like this together, and it's the first time that we've addressed that new policy for onboarding new staff or new board members. And I haven't had an opportunity to really have a conversation with the board. So that's what the, the point of this is, to get some direction, some feedback, and then maybe talk a little bit about those ideas of retreats on a, on a more regular basis. So this first part is the pre-election. Nothing, nothing out of the ordinary here. You've seen the school district board guide document that was shared, discussed. I don't need to go through that. Then after the election, we have a series of different steps. The organizational chart, we've got the consent agenda, we've got the mentor piece, exit interview forms, different meetings scheduled. And then, this was something that I found very, very well put together by the WSB, the new board member handbook. I don't know, has anybody had an opportunity to go and look at that doc yet? It's a lot of, it's pretty comprehensive.
I have been through not all the links, but yes.
So you'll see, I, I put on, under item 12 in this checklist, the idea of a, a full board retreat that's scheduled annually after the reorganization meeting, that would talk about these types of items, such as the common commitments that, that we have, our, our governance norms. I think they should be looked at annually, and anytime you have a new person added to the board, it would be an appropriate time to discuss them and see if there's anything that needs to be added, changed, or cut. Obviously, policy governance is something, since I've been here in the district, that's something that there's a lot of interest in coming from our board. And we talked about linkage meetings, and I know in my weekly check-ins with some of you, we've talked about additional stakeholder linkage meetings. And then when you get down to the bottom of number 12, the WSB board self-evaluation, we, we never did decide if this is something that we want to do. I've talked about it with the board over the last year and a half at different times, but if you were looking for my recommendation, I would recommend that we do this in, in May, this month. I could send the, the link and the email to you, and we'd get it done by a certain date. And then either in June or July, we would get the results back, and we could include that as part of that retreat to go through that, that data. And it would be something that gets tracked then annually from the WSB. It's a pretty, it's a pretty good survey that is used for that board self-evaluation. And then that annual retreat schedule, looking at July or August, if this is something that the board would like to do before our regularly scheduled monthly meetings, we would have a thirty to thirty-five or so minute retreat on a series of topics that we would, we would decide on. I, I would make an assumption that there's still interest in policy governance. I know when I talk with, with you in my check-ins, I, I do get some of that feedback. I put in here at the bottom of this checklist, just as placeholders, these are some of the things that we've talked about during my tenure here, these short two years. And then I put, you've seen this from Mark before, but I put it in here because it talks about the high achieving school districts do have boards that continuously work on, on improving their skills. And the only way we would do that, just like with our staff and, and the administrators, is, is through continuous growth through sessions. And we could put a schedule together, and that's, that's something that, that I'd like to have a conversation with the board about.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions? There being none, I'll entertain a motion.
So you're talking a motion in regards to this checklist? Or what are you talking about, Steve?
Do we need, well, are you looking for a motion?
I, I'm just looking for...
To adopt or not?
Well, you could, you could. I'm just looking for feedback on everything I put together there.
I'll just talk, I, I think it's really, I think it's really good. I, I like it. I, I wish I would have had some of that guidance when I first got on. I don't deal, you probably, probably feel the same way. It's always good to, you know, think about what our job is and revisit that, but yeah, I don't, I think it's really good. I like it.
I want to say, I just got done reading the book on board evaluation and the CEO evaluation on policy governance, and they said that evaluation on the superintendent is much more intense than it is the self-evaluation of the board. So I don't think it would be as, as time intensive, but we need more training, because I read those books, and some of it, it's like to read it three or four times, the way the gentleman writes. So, but it's, it's, it would be good, yes.
So are you, are you gentlemen referencing the, the retreat piece?
Yes.
Yeah?
I'm referencing any training, any conference training. I mean, you and I were both big advocates of going to conferences while we were teachers and learning outside, outside of here, our walls. So yes, I would say, yes, we need it. Okay, anything else?
One thing, I, I don't know, maybe it's mentioned in there, but is there a, when a new board member comes on, and obviously Steve is our guinea pig here, no offense, but is there a mentor that's assigned to him?
That's, it is in here, Pat, and that is the plan. And I've had communications with Steve Johnson in regards to this, and we're still in the process of identifying, I think. I, I haven't followed up with Steve recently, just...
It would seem to me that, that, that would be, I mean, most of us, when we were young teachers, we oftentimes had somebody who we sort of knew was our mentor, we could go to with any question and kind of procedure and how to do, not necessarily to train us in all the policies that are out there so much, but just like, you know, when it comes time to do this and this, how would we do, you know, that, that sort of procedural thing, I think was always very helpful.
Under number seven, Mark, if you want to show that on the screen, number seven, is the, the mentor assigned to the new member?
We have had that discussion. The one thing that we have to be cautious about is that any discussions between the mentor and the other individual is not necessarily trying to, for lack of other term, persuade
Right.
the other with regard to anything that may come before the board.
Right, and I, and I, that's, you're right about that, and I, but I think it still could be a good idea because there just are questions about procedures sometimes, you know, or asking like, have you ever gone to this conference? What's it like? Or if you're at the state convention, what's our expectation? You know, those kinds of things that somebody who you knew you could call and just ask about would be helpful.
Unless we are looking to add this as a policy in some fashion, I don't think we need a motion on it. If you have any additional input for Ron or for myself with regard to this, please feel free to reach, to reach out to us. With that, I'll entertain a motion. A different motion. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is that what we're after? That's what I'm after. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Oh, God, that was close.